Are we still in a practice session here?
No, we're recording.
Okay. Here.
Commissioner Carolyn Boatsman?
Here.
Commissioner Chris Gels?
Here.
Commissioner Victor Rashees?
Here.
And Commissioner Adam Regum?
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, we have a quorum. Welcome to the March 27, 2024 Regular Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Mike Murphy, Chair. Tonight's meeting is brought to you courtesy of Zoom. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. So our first item of business is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern. Deb, is there anyone who has signed up for appearances that wishes to address the commission?
No, sir. We have no one signed up for this evening.
Okay. Since there are no appearances, we'll now move on to regular business. The first item of regular business is to review and consider approving the minutes of the last two meetings, February 28th regular meeting and March 20 special meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any, is there any discussion about the minutes? Seeing none. Deb, can you please conduct a roll call vote on approval of the minutes?
I'd just like to confirm that it was Commissioner Gels that made the motion? Was it Commissioner Rashees?
Yes.
Thank you. Your voices sound the same when you.
This seems to be an ongoing issue.
I know, right? It's, you know.
I, I, since I was.
Her tribe needs to work on her tone.
Since I was here first, I demand that Chris change his voice.
Okay. Chair Murphy?
Aye.
Vice Chair Regum?
Aye.
Commissioner Rashees?
Aye.
Commissioner Gels?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
Commissioner Batazzo?
Aye.
And Commissioner Boatsman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes are approved. Our second and final item of regular business is a continued discussion of the Planning Commission Agenda Bill PCB 2405, Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review Housing Element Commission Comments. Welcome, Adam Zack, the Senior Planner. And he's going to walk us through tonight's process.
Great, thank you, Chair Murphy. So tonight, we're going to take a look at the comments that were received on the Housing Work Group draft of the housing element and some land use element consistency amendments that were part of that recommendation as well from the Housing Work Group. We, I briefed the Planning Commission on this matter at our last meeting last Wednesday, March 20. And following that meeting, we received some comments from Planning Commissioners on proposing some changes to those, the Housing Work Group draft, the housing element. Yesterday, I provided PCB 2406, which provided those comments, provided you with a copy of the, or with a summary of the comments, and then also outlined a categorization of those comments. So we divided them up into a couple of buckets for our consideration tonight to try to get this to move forward. There were, some of the comments were proposing changes to policy that would change the direction of the policy. So those were labeled as substantive comments. And we'll take a look at those here in a minute. I'll, I'll open up the, the draft and walk through those substantive comments. Quite a few of the comments were categorized as minor comments. Those are, were the comments that were like proposing, you know, changing one word that wouldn't really like change the policy direction of the. Were like housekeeping. For those, I'm going to recommend that the Planning Commission treat those kind of as a block, just because they're not, they're not really changing the policy direction within the draft. The final, there were two other categories. There was the challenging category, and those are things where they, the, the amendment as proposed would be challenging to meet some of our requirements. And those are summarized in the, in the bill. And then there were also questions, and so we provided responses to those questions. Speaking of questions, I see Victor has his hand up.
So at least on my screen, you froze a little bit, and so I didn't hear what you said in terms of what's being true. What do you want, what are you proposing to treat as a block?
The minor amendments, those things that are just clarifying edits or housekeeping edits.
Got it. Thanks.
All right, well, we, I'll just jump in here and I'll share my screen and we'll walk through the substantive comments. If you have the, if you have the document open, this is, if you have that Planning Commission Bill 2406 open that I sent yesterday evening, this would be on page three, the table on page three, those comments, but I'll, I'll open up the document here. So the first substantive comment we received is a proposed amendment to Policy 1.4. And the substantive, substantive comment is on 1.4C. So the Housing Work Group draft, 1.4C, so that we were going to provide equitable access to our plan for neighborhoods with equitable access to safe pedestrian and bicycle routes. The proposed amendment would change it to this underlying text here, streets that are safe for pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicle drivers and passengers. So we can, really, this is kind of more of a style thing, but there's a little bit of a change in emphasis. And this was proposed by Adam Reghub, if, Vice Chair Reghub, if you want to provide commentary, but we basically need to arrive at a direction here for this policy.
Yeah, sure. The rationale behind this comment was someone could use this, I, you know, to say, hey, we need to start building sidewalks, or we need to, you know, remove, you know, narrow lanes and build bike paths. And perhaps that may only focus on some of our more arterial roads, but I, I think it's important to articulate, and this is some, this is some verbiage from some of the recent housing laws that have been passed that say, hey, these streets, all streets need to be safe for those who use them, pedestrians, bicyclists, as well as vehicle drivers and passengers. You know, sometimes, I've seen some cases where, you know, one or two of those uses are prioritized, and it makes for some hairy driving situation. So that's the rationale behind this, just making sure it's applied broadly to all users of those roads and not at the, at the expense of those end vehicles.
So Adam, I have a question for you before I go to Commissioner Boatsman. Are you proposing that we discuss these and vote on them, give a thumbs up, thumbs down? Kind of approach, what are you thinking of here?
Yeah, here, we could probably just do consensus, provided no one would block consensus to making the change, or if there's consensus to not make the change. We don't need to make a motion for each one of these unless, unless that's helpful, you know.
Carolyn, did you have a question on the process here? You're, you're muted.
Yeah, I have a question on the process, but also a comment on the policy. So first regarding the process, in my preparation for the meeting, I have put all my notes in the order of which the substantive comments were provided to us in the staff memo. So if you start here, it looks like you're going through chronological order in the document, is, or in the, the draft, is that right?
That is right, yes.
Okay, if you tell us what the comment, well, okay, it does say what comment number it is there.
It's, it's number 21.
Yeah, I'll be able, you'll be able to find it then. Okay, very good. Then my comment about the actual policy, if I can get my thoughts together here. I believe that the word roots, safe and, safe pedestrian and bicycle routes means paths and streets. So I don't think we should try to tangle up the policy with drivers and passengers in cars.
Kate?
And I agree with Carolyn that that, the change changes the intent. A big intent of many of the bits of legislations that have passed recently are to make housing more convenient and accessible to people without high means, and that includes people that can't afford to maintain or drive a vehicle. We're talking about putting a lot of affordable housing in, and that's going to be looking at alternate forms of transportation, especially near transit corridors. So I would propose that if a change is needed here, that leave pedestrian and bicycle routes as is. And if someone wants to propose another change that would add safe streets for drivers, they could do that, but, but by doing this, you're restricting bicycles to streets, and there are plenty of other places bicycles go other than streets.
Adam?
I, I'd be amenable to suggesting my text edit as an addition and not striking one for C. I like Commissioner Cuse's suggestion.
Hey, do we have consensus on that? Or is there anyone who is opposed to that approach? Okay. Is that enough clarity for you, Adam?
Yeah, so it sounds like what I took from that was that there would just be a second. That this would just split into two, two policies.
Yes.
Okay. All right, the next policy, the next substantive comment, we've got a couple of comments on 2.5 here. This is looking at the, looking at the incentives that we're going to use to, or approaches that we're going to use to encourage new income restricted housing. And the substantive change is adding this 2.5.h, which is addressing the building requirements. And there's a staff proposed alternative here that I've labeled as alt that just might make this a little bit more clear, or as an alternative, it would kind of direct more at the, the development code rather than building requirements. And this was proposed by Commissioner Gels, if you want to speak to this.
Sure, I'll just speak briefly. I mean, it's something we raised last week, and you know, the idea that maybe we didn't cover all the possible incentives in the list, and just to create the, some support for the idea that may be difficult and less deeper, and I think, I think Angie made a good point about making sure that we didn't want to turn this into substandard housing by doing that, so I added the, the provision on health and safety. And I like the alternative, it's fine, but you know, people don't think it's necessary, that's fine. I just thought it might make the people who are trying to work out what I think is going to be a real difficult challenge and creating the affordable housing a little more flexibility and trying to do their job.
Kate?
I did not intend to have my hand up. Does it look like it's still up?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I will pop it a couple times here. Is it off now?
You got it.
Yes. Carolyn.
Okay. I do think it's a good idea, though.
Um, I, I think that we should not try to have different requirements for income restricted units in, in any way. I think that our requirements for construction, for, for, you know, our development standards are adopted for good reasons. And I don't think we should try to remove some of them for some of the housing. Whether it's health and safety, or, you know, sometimes we call things health and, we, we don't call things health and safety that are health and safety, for example, setbacks, for example, place to plant trees. You know, height, height that allows some sun to come into your yard instead of being next to a really tall wall. So there's, I just think that would be best to, to, to leave it alone.
Adam?
I second Commissioner Boatsman's comments. We don't want to create a lower tier of quality of life. Just because a builder says this is, you know, this is going to be this type of housing. I mean, at the end of the day, they benefit. The people who live there suffer, so I second. I, I agree with Commissioner Boatsman.
Chris?
The example I started with was some of the green, you know, I'm looking forward to the discussion where we can add in a lot of green building material requirements, which I think mostly will add expense to the building as opposed to have an impact necessarily on the, the people inside it. And so that, you know, I think the suggestion was made to do something a little broader than that, but you know, if people think it's more trouble and it's worth it, I'm, I'm not going to die on this hill, so.
Victor?
Agree with Commissioner Boatsman and Vice Chair Reghub.
Kate?
Yeah, that's a real hand. I, I wasn't sure, we, we were introduced to two different things at the same time. So if we're talking about reduced parking requirements, the, the problem is that developers will not build income restricted units without some easing. It, it doesn't pencil out economically. So many of the things, and I'm guessing this theme is going to come up in comments throughout this document. Maybe I'll be happy to be proved wrong, but that won't happen. But the point is that there was a consensus among the folks on the Housing Work Group that we are going to have to make some, what do you call it, accessions? Incentives, we, we need more incentive. If we want more affordable housing, we need more incentives for developers. And that might not sit well with people. That might not sit well with people that don't want anything to change. But the purpose of the housing element is to meet the requirements of the state, and those requirements require change. And in order to get that change, there's two things we can do. We can tax ourselves and pay for it out of our property taxes or other taxes, or we can create incentives. And we might have to do both to meet the state requirement. So I just want to be clear that we are going to have to have some change to meet the state requirements. So, you know, unless somebody, for these items that appear in this housing element, unless somebody offers a substitute way to, or a substitute incentive, I am not going to be supportive of taking incentives out. And I, I would be surprised to see the Housing Work Group, including three council members, support things that take incentives out, because there was just much to, so I wanted to share that with this group, since it was a smaller group that put this out there.
Carolyn?
Are we talking about comment log number one or comment log number 26 in this discussion we're having right now?
At, at the moment, we're looking at, at number one, and then we'll come back to number 26, this.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I inadvertently skipped ahead one, sorry.
So we're on number one. Okay, thank you.
So it sounds like there's, there's maybe no consensus for making the change proposed for, to add this 2.5.h, this, this one here that I'm highlighting.
Wait, are we, sorry, we're, we're jumping between, we keep jumping between these two. Are we talking about parking requirements? I was just talking about the parking requirements, and now we've jumped back to.
Yes, we, I inadvertently started at this, at this point here, and that's what we were talking about before, and then we'll come back to the parking one, because we, I, I inadvertently skipped that one, yeah.
I thought, I thought we had consensus on the staff alternative. Is that not true?
I, I didn't hear consensus.
And we should do a quick thumbs up, thumbs down?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Which are we doing thumbs up, thumbs down at?
Why don't we start with the?
The alternative. I'm, I'm, I don't want the other one. I think alternative is better, so let's just do that one and get it over with.
Yeah. I agree.
So it would be a thumbs up for making the change proposed in the staff alternative highlighted here. Oh. That's four thumbs up and three thumbs down. So we'll keep it in there, and then the, the advantages at this point, I mean, unless we want to have a formal vote. But at this point, this will go to public comment. We'll be able to gather comments on, on the alternative, and then you can consider this again if, if it's, if we got a lot of comments that are opposed. We can, we can take a look at it before the public hearing. So now we'll, we'll go to 2.5.g. This is comment log number 26. And the proposal here, there were two alternatives proposed in the comment. Either adding this qualifier at the end of reduced parking, in-town center zones, or just striking 2.5.g. altogether. And this was proposed by Commissioner Reghub.
So Adam, do you want to speak to that?
Um, I mean, let's, I think, I think everyone's spoken to it, so let's, let's just see what, what people think.
So then, sorry, Commissioner Gels, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused. It is, are, is there the potential to have this whole section is about, can you go scroll down to the beginning of 2.5? It's encourage construction of new permanent income restricted housing through approaches. So is there going to be permanent, new permanent income restricted housing other than in residential zones, or other, other than in town center?
Theoretically, so this, in, in implementing this, we could look at the possibly reducing parking requirements in, say, like our multifamily zones where they're currently a pretty high parking requirement.
Yeah.
Or we could look at other residential zones, you know.
Yeah, I don't see any reason to limit it. I guess I, you know, I would just, you know, leave it as it was.
Any other comments? Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with Chris on that. Do we have consensus on keeping the original language and not accepting the change?
No.
Okay, so we got five to two.
And then the final substantive comment in the housing element here is on Policy 5.1.d. And there were two comments on this one, comment log number 16 and 36. And comment log 16 is the, was propelled, proposed by Chris, Commissioner Gels, and it was this conform with state law and do not unnecessarily restrict multifamily housing, that addition. And then the other, the other comment was from Commissioner Boatsman proposing striking right-sized. So the, as shown here, it would capture both comments.
Yeah, I guess just, you know, my, yeah. Not sure if it's really that different in substance. I guess I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm concerned that the parking is going to be used as a, a way to restrict what the goal of this whole document is, is really to open up housing opportunities across the island. And I just want to make it clear that, yeah, you, you know, it's not the only thing is to make it as easy as possible to build low-income places, but you know, that, that, I think that's something that takes some care. And, you know, so I like this language better, but that's why I made the proposal.
Carolyn, do you want to comment on your, your?
Um, sure. As far as the term right-sized, I just, just don't think it's a term that is well-defined, and it kind of presumes there is a, a right answer, and we all know what it is, so I, I just feel like, if you deleted the term entirely and just said, ensure parking requirements adequately balance the need, so that was, that was my suggestion. But I'm fine with Chris's proposal here as well, because the term is gone.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Do we have consensus on these two changes to 5.1d?
Sorry, I didn't see a thumb from Commissioner Batazzo or Commissioner Cuse.
Is that, is that an abstention?
No, I'm just, I'm having a hard, I am having a little bit of a hard time deciding. Go ahead, Kate. I, I guess it's an abstention in a sense, because I don't see that it's a, changes the meaning. But I'm, I'm trying to really understand if it does change the meaning somehow. So if it doesn't change the meaning, is it necessary? Is it, is it wordsmithing for the sake of, you know? Does it really clarify things? Because really, this is a, this is an aspirational goal that is going to be clarified in the change to design standards. And that is a later process that's going to be really where the rubber hits the road, pun intended, here, and and so I don't know how important it is, but I, I'm reticent to thumbs up or thumbs down, because I can't tell if it changes something substantial. The whole thing is kind of aspirational and wishy-washy to start with, and, and that's intentional, I, I believe, because the, the real place that the changes will be made is the design standards.
Angie?
Um, you know, this particular edit was listed under substantive, so staff is suggesting that this is a substantive edit. I think maybe what I'll just share with my commissioners, so you all understand how I'm processing this as we move forward. I consider the product we got as something that accounted for some pretty complex state, county, city, and other laws about housing, pressing on Mercer Island to make some adjustments to our housing needs. And that the mayor, council members, and members of this commission participated in the initial draft, which made me very reluctant to actually change things that I think went through some pretty rigorous review in the first place, even if it was fast and felt hurried. So to the extent that things, like if they're sub-changing substantive, I'm reluctant without a really strong compelling case. So for, with that, I'll say I'm a thumbs down on this one.
Just to be clear, Angie, do you thumbs down on both of those, or the, or one of them, or?
I just, I, I.
I think the rest of us voted on everything. We didn't have two votes, we didn't have two votes on this.
Yeah, that's true. I agree with that.
Yeah, there, there was just one vote.
Yeah. Carolyn?
So have we voted already? And if so, how did the vote turn out?
Well, we're just trying, we had some abstentions there, so I think it was unclear.
Well, I mean, did we have five in favor? Or I thought we did, but
No.
If we don't, what, what's happening to our vote?
Yeah. Can, can we just ask staff, because I think Angie and I had very similar comments. Can we ask staff, why did you highlight this as substantial?
Sure, so the part of it was that there were, there were two comments on, on the wording here, and there was more of a change than just a couple of words. In effect, the implementation of this policy is probably not significantly different than what the implementation would look like of the original policy. You know, it's still saying that we're going to balance those, those parking requirements. Um, you know, it's still saying that we're gonna balance those, those parking requirements. Um, it, but, and balance the cost and uh the need for parking. Um, so there's probably not a significant change um. To the end result, um.
Well, I think, I think the main thrust here of the additional language is to. Make it clear that the policy should not be abused to. Um, undo what's required by state law. Um, and I think that's the thrust of Chris's added language. So that's, that's how I saw that addition. Um, Carolyn's comments about right sizing, I, I think that's. Well taken because I don't know what right sized is either. Um, so that's kind of a colloquial term that's may not, may not be appropriate here. Um, so those, those are my thoughts on, Adam.
I, I move that we take a, a vote on the right size comment only.
We have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. And, and the motion is, as I understand it, to delete. The, the wording are right sized. Correct?
Are right sized too.
Yeah, right sized too, okay. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Sure, I, I've had my hand up for quite a while.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carolyn.
It's okay, I know my hand is hard to see with the background color, sorry. Um, I've gotten a little lost here, um, I thought we did already take a vote and I thought that that vote passed. And I do think, you know, that the, the, the proposed language by Chris does improve it in ways that I would agree with Mike, but. You know, um, I do think we already had a vote, so that's one of my problems here. And then if, if we have a motion that we're now taking a vote on part of it. And that's been seconded, is there not discussion about that before we actually vote?
Uh, that's true.
Okay.
But, but speaking to your first point.
Yeah.
We were not officially voting on anything, we're trying to achieve consensus. The only vote that's been proposed is on the language that you have proposed.
Okay, well, I, I guess I thought we had a vote, but that's okay.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll.
It was a thumbs up, thumbs down for consensus purposes, but not, but there was obviously confusion. Uh, Victor. Deb, do you wanna comment on something?
Just before we get too far along, I would like uh to know who made the motion, who seconded.
Vice Chair Raghead made the motion and Commissioner Reshish uh seconded.
Okay, and it was a motion to delete quote our right size two unquote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct.
Oh, my hand is still up, I'm not quite done yet, if I may finish.
Go ahead, I, I was waiting for you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay, thanks, I'm a little confusing here, but. So if we are discussing whether to include or delete that, I think, I guess I probably already explained my reason. Previously in the discussion, so I, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll withhold at this point.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none? Let's take a vote on it.
Commissioner Batazo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gels?
Aye.
Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Commissioner Reshise?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rego?
Aye.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Murphy, excuse me, Chair Murphy.
Aye. Okay, so we do have consensus on that. Um, so then, uh, Victor.
I was gonna let you finish, so go ahead and finish.
Okay, I just saying the motion passes unanimously and that language is deleted. Okay, so now, having made that change. Do we? Have a motion since we're, we did not achieve consensus? Do we have a motion to insert the language proposed by Commissioner Gels? Uh, that's underlined in the draft?
Did you just ask for a motion? I'm sorry, I wasn't listening sufficiently. Uh, so moved.
Okay. Second, did you second, Chris?
I did.
Okay, moved and seconded, is it, do we wanna discuss that issue further? Victor.
I do. So I guess my comment is, is in the form of a question. Do we ever, do we ever have parking requirements that are intentionally not conforming with state law?
No, if that was a question for staff, um, and.
It's, it's a question for staff and commission.
You know, based on my experience, uh, Victor. The state does not tend to micromanage parking too much. Uh, Adam can comment on that further, but um. You know, I'd say that's not something that. Is, is a, a major issue, but there are requirements now or becoming uh in force, so.
But, but presumably, when they become in force. Will comply because it's state law. And so putting it here. Argues for, do, do we, do we need to call out other places where we're gonna follow state law?
Good question. This is more aspirational and not necessarily strict compliance as I read that. Uh, Carolyn.
Well, I think Victor makes a good point, we probably don't need to say we're conforming with state law. But the rest of the way Chris uh words it, I think is, is good, it's instructional to us, it's, it tells us to. Think about something. Which there are a number of arguments about, parking, that is. Think about it and act in, in a way that. Um, doesn't unnecessarily restrict multifamily housing. Because parking is sometimes a tool that, you know. Is used to per- pursue a. Um, a viewpoint, so I, I like the way Chris has worded it and I think it's an improvement, minus the con- conform to state law.
Uh, Angie.
I am not clear what this policy would state after the motion that we just made and passed. So there's still a lot of strikeout and I'm trying to figure out what I'm reading. That makes any sense, so I'm wondering if maybe Adam Zach can either. Read now that we've made one change we've agreed on and we're debating another, I would really like to see what we're debating on.
Yes, let me get that in here. The end result, the policy would read this. Um, or sorry. Um, that's after the motion, so let me, uh, let me get the rest of the text in here. I'll just do it without, I'll do it clean. So that's, that's how the policy would read. Without the strikeout and underline.
Okay, can I just? Chair Murphy, can maybe Commissioner Gels explain again? Why he thinks this makes it more clear or I'd like to understand. Why we're, he's proposing that change a little better.
So, I guess, I mean, one thing, just the, the, the state law thing wasn't me, that was in the original, just for, just a note. The um. I guess for me, between the language that I, you know, I like the fact that Carolyn suggested taking out the right size, but. It read to me as though the focus was going to be on, you know, on um. On the parking side as opposed to on the trying to create housing side, and I just wanted to create language that. Sort of emphasize that uh, that um. People should take a hard look at parking before imposing a cost to provide low income housing. Um, so, I mean, I, I don't think it's hugely different, um, and, you know, to the extent that it is. Um, then there's something I'm not understanding.
Uh, Kate.
Um, I'm gonna raise again that um, parking is uh. One of the many things that developers balk about, so this, this was intended to be about parking in, in discussions, um. Because it's a concession, it's a, it's an incentive and. I, I don't see a sub- substantial difference between the two, but I just wanna make sure that we're not like, um. But the point is that you could have less parking than currently prior to multifamily, that, that was the aspirational goal of this. So backing away from that, if the intent of this language is to back away from that. Um, then it's changing uh the meaning and purpose of it. Um, and then I'd also like to propose a friendly amendment um to strike. Uh. Conform with state law and that. Uh.
And add so.
And maybe they too needs to go.
Oh.
I'll second that.
Now, the question is up to Chris.
Fine with me, I mean, the conform of state law was in the original, it's actually throughout the document, there's a number of places where we say that. And, but I think Victor's point that, you know, that's an ex, you know, I, I guess it's a reminder to whoever is working, hey, there might be some state law here we have to pay attention to, but. If uh people are confident, people don't need that, I'm pretty happy to get rid of it. Um, and in terms of Kate's point, yeah, I think this is actually pushing in the other direction. Kate, I think it's trying to make it clear that giving up on parking is uh, is something that people should look at seriously.
Okay, that helps, thanks.
That was certainly the intent of it.
Uh, Adam. Or, I'm sorry, uh, Victor.
I'm gonna go back to uh Commissioner Batazo's comment on another item. Um, and I'll say that. It seems to apply here as well. Uh, the housing. Subgroup spent time working this. I don't see a significant difference between the language of the, the two things. Uh, of the, of the, I'm sorry, the two um. Two versions of fifty uh five point one point D. Uh, and so I support the original language minus the right size as well as. Minus the state law. I will. I'll, I'll allow this to play out and, and then if necessary, I can make a motion to. Remove the state law depending on how the, how we, how we decide on this.
Any other comments? So I believe there was a friendly amendment. And, and Chris. Was not clear to me from your last comments that. You were fine with Kate's friendly amendment?
I'm fine with taking out the state law part.
Okay.
That, 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 that amendment.
Okay, okay. Okay, so now. I believe, unless Deb tells me otherwise, we're voting on. The language proposed by Commissioner Gels. Minus the conform with state law uh language. And believe that's the motion.
So, um, Chair, if I may, we have, we need to vote on the amendment because we have a motion and a second on the amendment. And the amendment was to strike conform with state law and that they.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
So we need to take a vote on that and then we can vote on the main motion as amended.
Got it, okay. The amendment.
On the amendments, um, Commissioner Boatsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Reshise?
Aye.
Chair Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Commissioner Gels?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rego?
Aye.
And Commissioner Batazo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, the motion was unanimously, now we vote on the.
The main motion.
Language, yeah.
And that was made by Commissioner Boatsman and seconded by Gels.
Correct.
Okay. Uh. Commissioner Batazo?
Nay.
Vice Chair Rego?
Nay.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Commissioner Reshise?
Nay.
Chair Murphy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Gels?
Aye.
Hey, we have one, two, three, we have four, yeah, so it passes.
Yeah. Okay. Adam, back to you.
Okay, well, so that concludes the substantive amendments in proposed for the housing element. Now I'll switch over to the land use element consistency. Um. Amendments here. Um, got about twelve documents open. Uh, all right, so uh the first substantive change here, let me um. Make sure for those of you following along with the table, so the first substantive change. Um, I just cleaned him up, there was like strikeout and underline everywhere and so I thought this might be a little easier to read. Um, the first substantive change was proposed to the policy, uh. Well, we'll just do them in numerical order here, uh fifteen point one. Um, so that's highlighted here, this was comment log number twenty nine. Um, and so here, the proposal is to um. Basically undo the change that was proposed in the draft, so revert back to the original. Single family instead of all residential zones, um. So, that was proposed by uh Vice Chair Raghead, um, and we can start discussion there.
Yeah, Adam, you're up. Um, I guess, yeah, in light of it being marked as a substantive, I didn't mean that. Um, I'm happy to change it to, you know, away from zones to say neighborhoods. Um, but my, my thinking here is, it kinda like. You know, if you say preserve neighborhood character everywhere. I mean, that, that doesn't, that, that's just too diluted, um, I think, identify, hey, what? What, where, where's the character that primarily wants to be saved, be preserved? Um, you know, it, it, it can't all be preserved, it's kinda like, you know, if you say X lives matter and all lives matter, all lives matter is. You know, kind of a empty statement, but the first one is a very, you know, it's a, it's a. Firm statement, um, so I, my thinking is let's, let's firm that up and as I said, I'm happy to change. Zones away to neighborhoods since, you know, we're probably not gonna be having single family zones anymore. So, um, that, that's the thinking, that's the rationale behind it.
Uh, Carolyn.
Um. I like the change that Adam has proposed, presuming that's the one that says all residential zones versus striking out single family, correct?
So the change that's, this was what was in the how, the. The strikeout and underline is what was in the Housing Work Group recommended draft.
Okay.
Uh, Vice Chair Ragham has proposed returning it to the original, a single family. Or possibly changing zones to neighborhoods, so. The all is from the Housing Work Group draft, and the single family would be returning to the original.
And what heading is this fifteen point one under, are you able to scroll up and show, scroll up and, and show us what this is under?
Yeah, this is under the goal fifteen. Um.
Okay, so we're mostly talking about single-family residential community in this goal fifteen, is that right? So let's go back down again, now that I have that in my head, so I can look at it again. Well, I think it should say single family if it's about single family. Um. Residential zones, so I guess, I think we might've got confused on this one. At the Housing Work Group, I mean, we're talking about single family, so. Um, I think I would prefer what Adam has. Um, it is going to be important. And other cities are struggling with this already, as you begin to implement this. Policy in regulations and start to decide. What is this new middle housing going to look like in our residential zones? Is it going to be that we're gonna take the size of the box allowed now, which is already a big box? And allow that box to be. One point five times what it is now, twice as big, so that we can allow there to be. You know, a triplex there or. Uh, something like that. So. If we. If we have a policy that says to preserve the character in single-family zones. Then I think we're looking at it more from the standpoint of. Trying to keep. The, uh, existing scale and bulk of construction. Somewhat comparable to what we have now, so that. Multifamily would be. Um, there, there, it's already a very large structure that's allowed, so you can, you can fit in. Um. You know, more than one unit in, in that big box, so. Anyway, that's, that's what's behind my thinking on this policy.
Okay, Angie.
Um, I, I just wanna. Get some clarification, um. The purpose of the change was to broaden. The city's ability to implement. Multifamily in other ways and other zones, is that an accurate understanding or interpretation?
Yeah, I mean, this was partially proposed as a way to fit in that we're gonna have to do some, some moderate density. Um, that middle housing in our, in our, in all of our residential zones. And then also, this, this does broaden out that we're gonna preserve the neighborhood character in. In all residential zones, so it's either, really the choice is whether we're aiming to, or a policy is. To preserve neighborhood character in all residential zones, or preserve neighborhood character in single-family residential zones, that's the decision point here.
Okay. And then, also because this is housing-related land use policies in our comprehensive plan. The use of the word zone is consistent with our language, and therefore we probably don't wanna get. Um, creative by implementing other terms that maybe we don't. Use in our land use policy, so I don't, I don't know, for example, if neighborhoods. Suddenly confuses the issue, because what we are actually trying to talk about is. How we're looking at land use zones, is that a accurate clarification?
I, I think that's fair, using zones here has, it's a defined term that we know what it means, whereas neighborhoods is not, not defined, and we wouldn't have. That clarity.
Thank you.
Yeah, note that that introducing the word neighborhood there makes the statement circular, preserve the neighborhood character of neighborhoods. You know, just from a linguistic standpoint, it's a little odd. Kate.
Yeah, I think I might have been the person that proposed this in the Housing Work Group, and the reason I did is for the reason that Adam said, that we're talking about adding. Moderate density housing, which does change the character somewhat, um. But, but you, we want to aspire to not change it. Excessively, and so it just points to the residential design standard, which is gonna get a makeover to say, you know, when you're. Looking at the housing types to choose from and, um, making, making new rules, um. Think about neighborhood character and try not to mess it up, um, and then the other purpose for adding this was that, um. Uh, uh, resident Robin Russell, uh. Years ago said, when we were talking about housing density, um, they owned a condo in downtown Mercer Island, and they said, you know. Why do the people who have the lowest-cost housing have to. Bear all the burden of this, you're not gonna do anything in single family, but you're gonna build like ten-story houses, ten-story apartment buildings all around me? You know, and I think she made a really good point, but, um. You know, if you increase and increase and increase density in town center without pushing any of it out into moderate density and single family. Um, then you're really burdening, uh, one group of people over another in terms of, um. Absorbing, uh, the impacts of that density, so, um. You know, she brought, the point she brought up was an equity point, and I thought it was interesting, because I didn't agree with that resident on many things politically. But I, I've wanted to bring that point to bear, because there are a lot of, um, seniors and others that live in town center, and, um. They probably wouldn't mind if it was more of a fifty-fifty split instead of everything going downtown.
Carolyn.
Um, I wanna ask staff, do we, thi- this policy comes under a heading of single-family residential zones. So I guess I would ask staff two questions, one. Does having a policy that directs us what to do in all zones. Under a, under a heading that has to do with single family. Is there any inconsistency there, or? And, and that's one question, and the second would be, do we have policies under other zones like town center or? Uh, you know, that already say this. For those zones, in which case, we don't need to say it here.
So on the first question, um, what, what could end up coming out of this, so we're, here we're specifically calling out single-family residential zones. Depending on where we go when we're implementing House Bill eleven-ten in twenty-twenty-five. Um, it could be that the nomenclature around those residential zones is no longer single-family residential zones. So all residential zones would be a lot more, um. I, I don't wanna say future-proof, but at least twenty-twenty-five-proof, um. That's, that's the piece of this that fits in there.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Carolyn, I, I make a note, I don't think that goal fifteen is limited. Just to that, because it includes low to moderate density. Single-family residential communities, so.
Okay.
It covers a little broader than just single-family homes. Uh, Angie.
Uh, two points. The first one, just, I guess, following up on what you both are saying, um, the goal fifteen is telling us. That Mercer Island as a whole should remain principally a low-to-moderate-density, single-family residential community. And all subsequent language underneath that is supposed to support that primary, like, this is how we, as a community, are going to be. So it, it's interesting to listen to you guys talk about, is it single-family or multiple, I'm like, that, I don't know. It, it's a bit bigger in concept, I think, than just what zone we're talking about. That said, I wanna understand the process moving forward, are we making motions and voting now, or are we back to our thumbs-up, thumbs-down process on this kind of stuff?
Uh, well, we're gonna thumbs-up, thumbs-down unless we need a vote. So if we have consensus, there's no reason to have a formal vote.
Hmm. But that's not how we've done previous.
Uh, we did the first couple with consensus, and then we did a few with votes, because we had differences of opinion on the issues.
Um, so I said, uh, at this point, maybe we can look for, is there consensus to? Um, to go with the, to revert back to the original text. Um. Not striking single family and getting rid of all, so then the, let me just. The no change.
Which one is the Housing Work Group, at this point, I'm.
The, the one that is shown here is the Housing Work Group draft, as proposed in the, in the comment, this, let me. Let me do this, this'll help. The version as proposed in the comment would be what's highlighted here in yellow. So this is the Housing Work Group draft, this top one with the strikeout underline. This one is what's proposed in the comment. And so I think we can look for consensus on making the changes proposed in the comment, we'll keep it affirmative, um. I see, I see you five thumbs, Victor and Kate, I don't.
I need a little clarification on.
I lost the thread.
Okay.
Are we voting to keep the Housing Work Group? When are we voting to keep the new one?
We're, we're voting to keep the new one, so to go with single family instead of all. Okay, I see five thumbs down, um, so we'll, we'll go with the Housing Work Group draft, this all, uh, using all.
Kate, to your point, do you wanna have a formal vote on that? Or is that sufficient?
That's efficient for me.
Angie.
It's fine with me.
Okay.
Um, all right, the next comment, uh, proposed. This one's a little tricky, so fifteen point four. Um, this is the Housing Work Group draft here. Um, cleaned up, and then this is the version proposed in the comment. Um, there were, it, it was getting really hard to track, um. One to one, so, and this was proposed under comment log number thirty by, uh, Commissioner Ragham. Um, it's partially revert, reverting back to the original text, um, but then also making some changes, and as I mentioned, this is, um, I'll note this here, this is the Housing Work Group draft.
Adam, do you wanna comment since that's your proposal?
Uh, no, I, I think it, it speaks for itself, I won't, I won't belabor the point.
Okay. Uh, Carolyn.
I prefer the language of the Housing Work Group, because I think it's just very clear. And, um. See. And again, we are talking about. A residential, an area of the city, a zone, a residential area, whatever you want, that's. Probably not going to be very accurate, accurately referred to. Um, as single family. In a very strict sense in the future, so I think we're better off just having this under a heading, we're talking about. What is now called the single-family residential areas. And then this is a policy without belaboring and going over again this statement of. It's single family, it's single family, so that would be my reason for preferring what the Housing Work Group has, very clean, very simple.
Okay, any further comments? Victor.
Just a quick question for Adam Zach. This is marked as substantive, because. It refers to single family and single family may not exist in the future, is that right?
Okay. Yeah, and it would add, it would bring back this text at the beginning of the, of the policy.
But that's not, I mean, and, and I, again, maybe I have to go back and look at these definitions again, but. That's not really a heavy lift, right, I mean, it just. It's more words, but.
Correct, yeah, it's not like, it's not. Or ordering something completely one hundred and eighty degrees opposite, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Kate.
Um, I, I wanna make a quick correction if I may, my understanding from Jeff Thompson was. Uh, Thompson, Thomas, am I doing that wrong? Uh.
Thomas.
Thomas. Was that we are not eliminating single-family housing, but we are expanding the allowed uses, so the single-family zone is not going away. There's not gonna be any requirement that thou shalt build. Moderate-density housing everywhere. Um, so my, my understanding from Housing Work Group was, single-family zoning, the zoning, no zoning is changing. Um. It's allowed uses within those zones, um. So just wanted to o- offer that correction.
Thank you for making that clarification, I think the, that's a really good point, um. It's, yeah, there's, there won't be like a minimum density or something like that, so, um, yeah. Good, good clarification, hopeful.
Carolyn.
Yeah, I just wanna say also, Kate makes a good point there, it kinda helps us with this little tangle of discussion we've been having about, you know, what term to use for this place, so, yeah, good clarification.
Okay. Do we have consensus with respect to. Adopting the Housing Work Group language, which is. The, for want of a better term, a shorter version.
Okay, looks like six thumbs up. Then.
Adam, do you need a vote, or is that sufficient? Yeah. Okay. Great.
Yeah, we'll keep rolling here, um, the next one. Is. Fifteen point five, um, so there were a couple of, of comments on fifteen point five. Um, which is a, would be a new policy, um, added to the land use element that gets at managing the impacts to. Um, or the impacts that may result from new development in our residential zones. Um, the comment, the substantive comment comes from, uh, Commissioner Boatsman, and she proposed, uh, essentially eliminating these first three, A, B, and C. Um, and then incorporating it essentially into one, um. Into one policy, and if, um, that she, she might have a, some explanation for that, you know.
Sure. Um, so, we're asking for things here, or we're, we're recommending that we do things, but we already have. Regulations for. Fifteen point five point A, regulating on and off-street parking, we already have regulations encouraging both the establishment and retention of landscaped areas and the retention. Uh, of trees, planting of trees, um, yeah, we have that as well, so those are already in the city code. The establishment of incentives and anti-displacement measures consistent with the housing element. I was wondering if we needed to have that under this. Section of our. Um. Comp plan, but. I do see that in the alternative proposed by staff. Let me see here, no, you don't have that in there, yeah, so I, I was, I, I, I didn't see necessarily why we needed to have those incentives and, um. In the residential zone, but maybe we do, I'd like to ask Adam about. And, um, in the residential zone, but maybe we do. I'd like to ask Adam about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that this was the, eh, the original pro- uh, proposal here would create some linkage with the housing element. Um, and that just is a, a stronger bond, but I don't know that it would be problematic if we didn't have that. Um, that language here because it is throughout the housing element.
Okay, so we already have it there.
Yeah.
Okay, so given, given that we already have it in code, we already have it in the housing element. I think the essence of this policy should be what's in fifteen point five D. And I think the staff has rewritten it very well.
I, I guess my question is for staff. Um, and it's a clarifying question. I. I'm not, I can't tell whether this is a typo or I'm just unfamiliar with the terminology, but the last part of that last sentence reads. Consistent, consistent with the existing built form in residential zones. What is built form?
That would be like the, the scale, intensity, the way that, um, built, the built environment is shaped in, in that area.
Can we put that in human language?
I could, I could revise it. Yeah. Um, I think we have. Um, I mean, this compatible with surrounding neighborhoods is probably a little bit more plain English. Um. So instead of consistent with, um, what we could do is to be. Compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. That's a little more plain spoken.
Uh, Adam.
Um, I like what the housing work group had here. Um, you know, I understand, yeah, definitely built form is one, one of those. Impacts, but I think it's good to point to the fact that. Um, you know, anti-dis, I, 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 I just like more information. So I, I, I would. I, I'll give a thumbs up for keeping it as is. Um, because built form doesn't, to me, I understand, yeah, we have all those other. A, B, and C articulated somewhere else, but if I'm going to section fifteen, it's good to know. That, um, those impacts go beyond just how the physical structure looks. Um, so, yeah, I, I like what the housing work group had here.
Carolyn, do you have a new comment or is that?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Adam, uh, R. When you say you like with the housing work group and you mentioned, uh, about the anti-displacement, are you referring to? Liking to include C along with what is expressed in the staff version? Or are you talking about including A, B, C, and D?
The latter, yeah, I, I, I prefer this, the, the original version to, to yours respectfully.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay, so let's, uh, see if we have consult, Victor.
Sorry, I, I just, uh, Carolyn's question triggered a question for me. Uh, so Commissioner Boatsman, can you just explain why you eliminated? I understand A and B. Why did you eliminate C in your?
Because it's already. Appears in spades in the housing element. And this part of our work is updating the land use element to be consistent with. The housing element where need be. But this is not need be because the housing displacement part of it is already addressed very well in the housing. So, that's why.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, any more comments? So let's see if there's consensus on the language in fifteen point five. Original as proposed by the housing work group. Yep, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to pose one quick clarifying question to staff. Um. What is the purpose of updating the land use policies to be consistent with housing? Because one of the points I've heard commissioners bring up is that, well, it's already in housing, so we don't have to do it here. But we have also discussed, uh, about how we have to make some things consistent between. Comp plan sections and policies. And I have some concerns that we're actually supposed to be making sure we're updating land use policies to be consistent with. Not rely, not necessarily entirely rely on other sections to host the change or the modification. So can you just help me understand what's important or what's necessary there?
Sure. So the, the purpose of this exercise is to make sure that. Uh, in those points where the two elements overlap, because there is a lot of overlap between the two of them. That they're, well, one, that they're not conflicting because that would be bad, but then also to make sure that we're. That the policies in the land use element are supportive of the policies that we have in the housing element. And so there's quite a bit of, we, we have quite a bit of. Um. There, there's a lot of like leeway within that. We have to make sure that they don't explicitly conflict. Um, and that they, uh, where we, where the city finds necessary to find. Places where they can support each other. Um, so. Um, if it, as originally proposed, this fifteen five C is a good example. Um, yes, it probably doesn't need to be in the, in the land use element because we do discuss it at length. And the housing element isn't more or less important than what's in the land use element, like they're even, uh, partners in the plan. Um, but this is just creating some of that linkage and this is a stronger connection between the two. But it wouldn't be a problem if we didn't have that in there. So some of it is just a style, um, choice on our part.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think first we'll address. Whether there's consensus around keeping fifteen point five as proposed. Uh, in by the staff here. So thumbs up on that.
I'm sorry, Chair, that's not clear to me. As proposed by the staff or the original housing work group?
Uh, sorry, as proposed by the staff and has presented in, in the exhibit that we're looking at.
So the, the alternative here, I've highlighted it on the screen.
So we're voting yes or no to that?
No, we're saying yes or no to fifteen point five, A through D.
Oh, as proposed by the housing work group.
Well, there's some, there's some verbiage changes to that.
There are some minor changes that are, um, how, that were housekeeping edits. Um.
Okay, and I, I would have, I would have an issue with minor number four. I didn't think it was minor. So, um, we could come back to that perhaps, but, um, just want to let you know that now.
Okay. May.
It would be easier to take a vote, I think, on the alternate, alternate, and then see if that, you know, where that takes us and then go from there.
Okay, and the alternate is as drafted by. I guess, uh, that was staff or Carolyn, that was you and with some changes by staff?
No, it was by staff.
Okay, okay.
In, in response to comment log number thirty nine.
Okay, okay.
Highlighted on the screen here.
Is there consensus on that?
I see five thumbs down. Okay. Drop that out here. So then we would go back to fifteen five as, as drafted here, um. With the minor amendments made.
And Carolyn, do you have, uh, an issue with one or more minor amendments?
Yeah, I'm looking at comment log three right now, just a moment. I don't have any problem with comment log three, but, uh, um, I do have a concern about comment log number four. So, let's see here. Let's see here. So, Chris, were you suggesting that that be changed in your comment? Number four? I'm not clear.
I think Adam may be clear where we are. I think the draft we have up there. Oh, wait a minute.
I just pulled in the strikeout underline so you can see what the, the change was here. So this is what that, what struck here is what the housing work group proposed. And then this, uh, additional text is from, from comment number four.
Yeah, I guess I'm not clear why I said that. Um, the still language from sixteen, I guess I just took in the language from sixteen point five. Just to be consistent with that. Um, but I'm not sure it makes that much difference.
Yeah, the. Uh, Adam, you have comment?
Um, yeah, I, I support comment log three, um, the change in comment log four, I would not support. Because compatible is a very objective word, scale and intensity and built form. You know, put some more specificity, um, so, yeah, I like, I like the first change. I, I don't like the second one.
And I think part of my concern was built form. I felt a little bit like, uh, Victor that, uh. It was a term I wasn't completely familiar with, but, you know, I feel better about it now. So if other people feel that way, I don't feel the same.
Uh, Victor.
I move that we revert back to the housing work groups. Language. With, with, hang on, hang on, you may not like it. With, with, with a change to, with a change to built form that is consistent with the previous built form change.
And what is that change?
I, I don't have the exact language. I'm sure Adam knows.
Yeah, um. I, I can find it. I, I don't.
I think it was compatible.
So it actually may turn out to be redundant, uh, because I think that's. Consistent with. Existing compat. Right?
Uh, compatible with, yeah, here. I can type, let me type it up real quick. It'll be easier than trying to say it out loud.
Just to clarify, Victor, you rejecting comment log number three?
No, comment log number four.
Right, but I'm asking about three. You said you went back to the housing group language. But the language on the screen is a little different because it has comment log three incorporated into it.
I'm just, I'm talking specifically about fifteen point five point D.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with fifteen point five point B.
It's a little different than what your motion was, but it's good to clarify.
So, wh- what is that that you just typed in? Is that, um? Who proposed that? I'm not.
I did.
That's proposed by Chris, is that right?
Nope, that's me.
Oh, Victor, excuse me.
Chris and I apparently share a voice.
Okay. Okay, so, um, alright.
Okay, um, so Victor, one of my questions.
I think I need a, I think I need a second.
Oh, okay, sure.
I think we need clarity on what the motion is.
So the motion is to revert back to the original fifteen point five D from the housing work group. That re, that reads control the scale and intensity of new development to be consistent with. Losing built form and saying with the existing surrounding neighborhoods.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Point of clarification, Chair Murphy.
Pardon me?
Point of clarification, please.
Yes.
And forgive me, um, perhaps I'm just not understanding. Wouldn't it just be simpler to? For the motion to be to amend or fifteen point five point D to read as Adam has written it versus. The motion that, uh, Commissioner Reshie's.
If that's easier, all, all, the only, the only thing that I have an issue with, with. The, or the, what was proposed by the housing work group. Was built for me. So my, uh, and sorry if, sorry if, sorry if this is making things too complicated. Yes, I.
I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm happy to record the motion however you would like. I, I do, I will say that if, if. I would need you to restate it for me, um. Because I'm looking at what Adam's written as an outcome of your motion and. Trying to connect the dots from a scribe perspective.
Let, let me, let me ask this. Would it be easier if we took a vote on Chris's motion first? And then simply went back to the housing work group proposal and I proposed striking the word built form and replacing it? Would that make things easier?
No, I think, I think it's easier to just propose your motion and read it as. Adam has drafted it there.
Okay. Yep, does that work for you?
Okay, so, um. Communication's a wonderful thing, um. Then I, I read the motion as, the motion was made by Reshie, seconded by, who made the second?
Vice Chair Raggett.
Thank you. To amend fifteen point five point D to read. As Adam has it written there.
Correct.
Whi- which, which one are we voting on, Adam? Could you highlight it, please?
Yeah, let me highlight it.
Thank you. And Adam, if you'll just cut and paste it, send that to me so it'll just drop it in and that just makes it faster on my end.
Yeah.
I'm not wasting anyone's time. Thank you for the clarity, everyone. I apologize for the. Interruption, but I want to make sure I'm capturing any of our actions correctly.
Okay, so now that we have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. Uh, I'm not sure who was up first. Kate, go ahead.
Um, I, I have a problem with the edit because. Making scale and intensity consistent with existing. Um, we're talking scaling intensity that conflicts with all of the amendment. All of the new language in the housing element, which said you're going to add middle housing. And that's why. Uh, fifteen point five point D is written as is. It's meant to direct staff when looking at residential design standards. To look at, um, character, style, design, height, things like that, um. Have that be consistent, but intensity, um, the, the housing element says you're adding. Uh, you're adding density, you're adding middle housing. So I don't see how we could pass. This motion, um, with the, this alternate highlighted fifteen point five point D. Because it conflicts, the purpose of this update is to be consistent with the housing element and this is inconsistent with the housing element.
Carolyn.
Um. I, I would favor the way the housing work group worded it to start with. Because, you know, they were, we were talking about controlling the. Scale and in terms of intensity, we weren't talking about density. We were talking about intensity. In other words, how much hardscape are you going to have in a neighborhood? And so this was intended to say that when it comes time to writing the regulations, controlling the scale. And the intensity of the development to be consistent with the existing built form. Built form, okay, it might be a little bit of a wonky term, but it is indeed what we were talking about. We were talking about. The structures themselves. And if you just change the language and say compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. That doesn't get us talking about structures. It could be roads, it could be driveways, it could be, um. Uh, um, you know, any number of. Uh, um, you know, any number of. Neighborhood concerns, but this was meant to relate to the buildings themselves. And I think this is going to end up being extremely important policy when comes time to prepare the, to write the regulations. Because we're going to have to decide how big are those buildings going to be? How intense? Is the structures in our, in our, you know, residential areas, what's that going to look like? So I would recommend kind of swallowing the wonky term of built form and leaving it just the way. That the Housing Work Group wrote it.
Uh, Victor.
So, um, to address the last two comments, so number one. With the exception of built form, this is exactly what. The Housing Work Group, um, recommended. And number two. Uh, you'll recall that I have no idea what built form means, and I think most of the people on this island don't understand what that means either. And so I asked for an equivalent in human language. And this is what I was given, and again, I don't know what that definition is, so I'm going to accept, uh, what we've been given here on, on good faith. Um, and so if there's a better term, I'm simply saying. Put this into language that people can actually read and understand. And aside from just putting it into human language, I'm, I, I am absolutely arguing for what the Housing Work Group proposed. That was in my motion.
Uh, Kate.
Um, I'm, I'm thinking maybe this is an argument I lost in the Housing Work Group, so sorry for wasting your time.
Uh, Carolyn, and then I have some thoughts on this language because there are some problems with it.
And, and Victor, you know, getting back to you about the term built form, and I, I realize you're, what you've proposed otherwise is what the. The Housing Work Group had proposed as well. But, um, I'm, I'm afraid that the replacement, you know, um. Consistent with the neighborhood, there's, there's the problem that I would have, that it's too vague, because it's, this is meant to be. Referring to the actual structures themselves. So what I would suggest is Adam, maybe we could come up, Adam, Zach. Uh, maybe we could come up with a better term than built form. How about bulk and scale? We tend to use that a lot in our policies. Could something like that explain what this gets at?
Bulk, bulk and scale, uh, would work. I mean, we already talk about scale and intensity up here. I mean, I, I think that this for policy direction is probably at a roughly the right altitude, um, because. When we're, when we're developing development standards, things like, like. Well, you've mentioned roads and driveways, tho- those kinds of standards are also included in those development standards. And so the kind of broader, uh, built. Uh, scale and intensity of those surrounding neighborhoods, that, that really gets at what we're. What we're directing with those development standards or what we're regulating.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So I have a few thoughts on this one. First of all, the word consistent is a problem. Uh, consistent means acting or done in the same way. Compatible, which is actually the statutory term used for middle housing, is able to exist or work with. So it's a somewhat lower standard. And the definition of middle housing, E S B eleven ten. Says middle housing means buildings that are compatible in scale, form, and character. Et cetera, with the, basically with the neighborhood, with the structures in the neighborhood. So I think that the safest route for us is to lift the language right out of the statute. And say compatible in scale, form, and character, which I believe captures what we're saying, and which is. Not only very defensible, but right in line with what the definition is in the statute. Uh, and I think it'd be foolish to, to use a word like consistent with. Because people could then point to that and say, well, the, yeah. This isn't too bad, but it's not exactly like what's been built here before. And that is, I think, completely inconsistent with E S B one eleven ten and with this policy. So I, I think we, we need to make those changes. Um, I'm concerned about the use of the term intensity, because the intensity. Sounds like density and could be interpreted to mean. Some of the same, same things, which again, is incompatible with what this policy change is being. Uh, what is being required of us by state law. So I think that we need to work with the language in the law. We need to avoid words that create a problem for us, uh, and the word scale, uh, form and character are all in there. And I think they would be safe to use and appropriate and at the same. Altitude, um, with, uh, in terms of evaluation. Vic, Victor.
So just a, a clarifying question on your comment. Which is the lower standard, consistent or compatible? Consistent is the lower standard?
No, I, I think compatible is more flexible than consistent. Consistent by definition. If you believe the O E D is acting or done in the same way, unchanging in nature. Um, so. And whereas compatible is able to exist with or coexist with. In other words, it's not too far off. Um, but consistency is, I'd say, a tougher standard to meet and could be used to block. Um, housing that is not exactly consistent with. The existing structures that are there, that is the single family homes. And I think that's a problem. I think then we're walking ourselves into a violation of the statute. Or let me put it this way, we're giving people who. Don't like the statute and who don't like to see the change, a tool to fight what. We are supposed to be allowing. Carolyn.
Well, I, I just think you make some very good points, and I, I support what you're saying there. So I think we could use some more. Changing here, but I don't know where we're at on a motion, so.
The main motion is still on the floor. If there's a desire to amend the main motion.
Oh, okay.
Or, or Deb, correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion could be withdrawn and we could make a new move.
That's, that's correct. You could, as long as both the motioner and the second are, uh, withdrew.
Mm-hmm. Hey, I'm happy to withdraw the motion.
Vice Chair, right, okay.
Sure.
Yeah. And I took the liberty of. Uh, typing up Mike's. Uh, Chair Murphy's, uh. Or trying to capture what, what I heard there, um. So here, let me.
Yeah, it should be scale, form, and character.
It needs an N.
What was that, Chris?
Should be compatible in scale, form, and character. Oh, no, the N's comes after compatible scale format in existing.
No, I think you're right. I think it's compatible in form, scale, and character with existing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Correct.
Let's see if we have consensus on that, I think.
Yeah, we can, we can do consensus or we can take a vote, um, but we would need a motion to take the vote.
Now let's see if we have consensus first. Oh, I guess we need a vote. Okay. I move that fifteen point five point D. Be amended to read. Control new development to be compatible in scale, form, and character with existing surrounding neighborhoods. Do I have a second?
Second.
Peter.
Hey, any further discussion, Adam?
I'm going to trust our Housing Work Group on this one. Um, I like their original words, and it's got three city council members who know more than me.
Yeah, but there's no, no guarantee that they read the statute. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Deb?
And just to confirm, it was seconded by Reshiz or Gels?
Gels.
Sorry, y'all. Okay, uh, Commissioner Boatsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Reshiz?
Aye.
Chair Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Batazzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuse?
Aye.
Commissioner Gels?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Raggett?
Nay.
Six one.
Okay.
For the record, I don't think we sound anything alike.
Probably not in person, but right here.
Okay, um, we've got one more substantive comment, um.
Can we, can we go back a sec?
Sure.
You know, I'm, I mean, I would propose I just make this motion, then we decide and get it over with. I would like to strike fifteen point five A. And make a motion to do that. The parking, you know, Carolyn makes a good point that it's already. Covered, I'm, you know, got my concerns about, you know, over focus on parking and contact of development. And middle housing, and I don't see any reason to add it here.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion, Kate?
I, I understood when this was developed, um, for Andy's, oh, sorry. Uh, Commissioner Batazzo's earlier comment that some, uh. Repetition or some repetition was necessary among the different. Among the housing element and the land use, um, oh my God, I'm just losing the thread here. We needed the same thing said in different documents for consistency, um, so I'm opposed to the motion.
Adam?
I, I agree with, with what Kate said.
Okay. Uh, Carolyn?
You know, I seconded this, but I'm beginning to look at this and going, we shouldn't be spending our time on, I'm probably worrying about that. It doesn't hurt if. There was some reason the Housing Work Group wanted that to be there. If there's some reason it benefits. These two elements working together, I guess I figure we've probably messed with this one enough, but I know I seconded it, so I did, I did second it.
Victor.
I agree with Kate and Adam. We've got climate action all over this thing. Why not parking?
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, motion's been made and seconded to delete fifteen point five point A. Kate, or Deb, do you want to call the roll?
Vice Chair Raggett?
Motion to delete, so, uh, nay.
Commissioner Batazzo?
Nay.
Commissioner Gels?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuse?
Nay.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Am I voting to delete or am I voting to leave it the way it is?
You're voting to delete.
Nay.
Commissioner Reshiz?
Nay.
And Vice Chair Murphy?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Adam, you've been elevated again.
Um, did we do a consensus on comment log three, uh, fifteen five Bravo?
We did not, um, that was, uh, within the, the. The memo that was categorized as a minor change, um, we can take a look at it, though, if there's something, if there's discussion. That would be useful there.
I, I was just, yeah, I, I'll give it a thumbs up.
Okay. A th- a thumbs up to the, the proposed change, or, okay, um.
Yeah, so Adam, you, your concept here, or Adam Zach, your concept here was to. Deal with the minor changes, um, or what were classified as minor changes kind of en masse. Um.
Unless, yeah, unless there was something that, uh, Planning Commissioner wanted to discuss, um, we can, we can pull anything out of that minor bucket. Um, but if, otherwise, we can just treat them as a, as a block, um. Or at least that was the proposal.
Okay.
Um, so I'll keep going. We've got one more substantive comment, um. And this one gets a little complicated because there were a couple of, um, there were a couple of. Comments about the same policy. So this was land use policy sixteen point five. Um, and this relates to comment logs five, twenty eight, and thirty two. Um, and so, um, comment log number five was the proposal from, uh, Commissioner Gels to, um. Um, to drop the on vacant or underutilized sites, um. Which would kind of generalize where this middle housing would be encouraged under this policy. Um, so it's a, a slight, a slight change in, in policy direction here. Um, but this is the clean version, uh, without the strikeout or underline. And then there's also this, this staff alternative I proposed at the end here, adding this high capacity transit component. Um, to get it, some of the comments from logs twenty eight and thirty one from, uh, Commissioner Rag have, um. Regarding the high capacity transit, um. Component. So this last clause of the policy was in response, uh, to those two comments there.
Carolyn?
Uh. I'm just trying to figure out what the Housing Work Group had and how this differs from it. I'm looking at the screen. And it would be helpful if I could see it right there instead of looking at all my papers.
Yeah, let me get, let me get that for you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I guess I can comment on my suggestion that be limited, not be limited to. You know, these, um. Vacant or underutilized site. I mean, I guess for me, middle housing. Is an alternative for people, and I, maybe I don't understand the term. If. Someone tears down a house, does that become a vacant and underutilized site? Or if, uh, is this cover, so is that covering that situation? Maybe that's a point of clarification, because what I see the most common situation is going to be is somebody who's. You know, selling their two thousand square foot house and with the land prices, they're not going to be able to, you know. Do nothing with it. They're going to do something big, and, and so I'm thinking they're going to potentially be able to replace it with middle housing.
Right, so vacant would be anything, like when we're, when we're calculating capacity, a vacant site would be something that has. Um, little to no development on it at all. Whereas an underutilized site, it would be something where, because of the size and the zoning of the property, maybe. Let's say like two dwelling units were allowed there, and they only had one dwelling unit, we would call that an underutilized site. Because there's additional density available on that site.
But if we want to cover the tear down situation I'm talking about, then we'd have to strike that language.
Right, it may not, that may not sweep up, like, underutilized might not sweep up a tear down rebuild situation.
That's, sorry, that's, that's the reason. I, I feel like that's a really important place, and I'm a big middle housing fan. I mean, I really think there's. Opportunities to give people options and, you know, people to age on the island and, and downsize, people to have their kids move in, you know, firefighters and teachers living here. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor, so I don't want to see it limited this way.
And, and it's worth noting, too, that the, the parameter that comes from, uh, House Bill eleven ten, the middle housing. Is this critical areas piece? So wherever we go with it, we do want to make sure that we're saying that it's outside of those critical areas, because that's one of the limitations there. But this vacant or underutilized, that's a local choice thing. It's not, um, required.
So when you say that's a local choice. Uh, so when you say that's a local choice thing. Is there something in the statute that says that, or is, are you saying that, well, that's something we just. Are choosing to do?
It's something that we are choosing to do.
Okay, but there's no, there, there's no language in the statute for that.
Correct, yeah, so what I'm saying is that the, the alternative as proposed would not run afoul of eleven ten.
I mean, wouldn't it be more consistent with eleven ten?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the question is, if there is no statutory basis for limiting middle housing to vacant. Or underutilized sites. I think we run, run the risk of having something that's not compatible with, with the law. Adam?
I believe Commissioner Boatsman's hand was, uh, ahead of me.
Oh, okay, Carolyn?
Sure, I'm still having trouble with, um, versions that I'm looking at here. So the one that is highlighted yellow, that's the Housing Work Group?
Uh, yeah, well, it's a strikeout underline version that incorporates the comments, let me see, I can. I- i- in a minute here, let me get the original.
I didn't think we had that preference for transit thing in there, the Housing Work Group, but.
Right, we, we didn't, let me get the, let me get that one, sorry. Okay, here's the. Housing Work Group version.
Okay, but I would like to advocate for that for a moment. I think it's a really good policy, I think if we add. With, um, preference to areas near high capacity transit, I, I think we're kind of violating. The state law, because we're supposed to allow this kind of development anywhere. In the residential zone. Um, that the law requires us to allow it, I don't think we can. Make preferences to say, well, it's a little closer to the transit, so we'll, we'll do that, so I would. Say that that phrase, I don't think should be in the policy. The word compatible, I think is the right word. Um, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Adam?
Um, I mean, I, I agree with what Commissioner Boatsman said, the law says we need to allow it, um, this. Is saying encourage it near high capacity transit, we've just been talking about. How we're trying to de-prioritize vehicles, so let's not make it harder on. Um, the people living in that middle housing, where, yeah, the law says it's allowed everywhere. But let's encourage it where it's actually more functional, near the high capacity transit, so that was the reason behind. My, uh, comments to that one.
Victor?
Uh, my comment's the same comment, uh, but I think it not only applies to Commissioner Boatsman's comment. It also applies to your comment, Chair Murphy, it, it would be different if we said require. But here we're saying, this is where we are encouraging, and because this is an aspirational document. Um, I think we can certainly encourage things wherever we want without running afoul of the law.
Yeah, there's a fine, fine line between encouraging and, and encouraging tends to lead to creating incentives. And that. Can be a problem, I think, I, I agree with you in principle, Victor. Uh, with what you're saying, but I think that's a slippery slope from. From a policy of encouraging, and then incentives, et cetera, and, um. It does, I think does raise an issue.
I, I, I think the slope slips both ways though, right, because. You know, without, without the incentives, of course, we're gonna follow the law, so. Why even talk about it? So I, in short, I, I, I support the original Housing Work Group language.
Yeah, I definitely, uh, in, in alignment with this idea that we wanna support, um, or encourage housing near transit. Um, for a variety of reasons, however, I just wanted to share that in the Housing Work Group, we talked about. Some. More regulations coming from the state, discussions of transit oriented development, um, those have not. Successfully passed or been negotiated, there's something coming, and so we avoided. Intentionally, and this was led by the mayor, we intentionally avoided talking about, um. At least this is my rec- recollection, I don't wanna speak for anyone else, I believe we avoided, um. Getting real specific about transit, um, because. We're gonna be getting some guidance and some model ordinances from the state in the future on that topic. Um, so as much as I, I agree with Commissioner Reggum that having. Denser housing near transit makes sense, um, I, I think the thought of the Housing Work Group was, let's address that. After we have clear guidance, um, those new regulations have passed at the state level, and we have. Clear guidance from Commerce and perhaps a model ordinance to help us with that language, so we don't run afoul of any new regulations.
Uh, Carolyn?
Yeah, um. In regards to, to, um, whether or not we're encouraging. Um. Higher density near transit. Housing Bill H one 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 O basically already does that. You know, the, the requirement is that you allow middle housing in residential zones. But within a quarter mile of transit. Um, the standard is higher, I think it's four plexes for our. Our, um, population, is that correct, Adam, Zach?
Yes, yeah, it's up to, up to four dwellings per lot within that quarter mile.
Okay, so it's already built into H one one O, and then within the. Um, multifamily area, duplexes are allowed anywhere. And triplexes and fourplexes if there is at least one affordable unit, is that correct, Adam Zach?
Yes, there's an affordable housing, uh, bonus in there.
Okay, so I just wanted to add that, you know, hi- hi- higher density near transit is already in H one one O. And I was thinking about, about that when I saw Mike Murphy's. Questions, uh, asking about whether the Housing Work Group had considered. Um, a higher density near transit, it's already baked in, and it might come in the future in the form of a transit oriented development bill. Um, so. Um, so then one other thing, moving beyond transit, I would just say. Adam, Zach, I thought that the Housing Work Group deleted the phrase on vacant or underutilized sites.
Um, it did not, that was proposed by comment log number five.
He, he, right, but I, I, I'm saying something else, I thought the Housing Work Group deleted that phrase, um. So I just wanted to bring that up and double check.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that, that wasn't one of my track changes from.
Kate, I, I think, think we discussed feeling like we shouldn't be emphasizing that we're only encouraging it on vacant and underutilized land. So I, I thought we deleted that. But anyway, but you're saying number five proposes the same thing, right?
Correct, so I think that there's, there's kind of two proposals here, and maybe we should take them, uh, one, one at a time.
Okay.
And, and so the, the first is as proposed by Commissioner Gels in comment log number five. That would be to drop the on vacant or underutilized sites phrase. Um, so that would be dropping what's highlighted here.
Yeah.
Are we kind of voting, okay, yeah.
Well, let's, we're trying to see if there's a consensus on that. Four to three.
Four to three.
Four to three to drop, to, to delete the language?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, does anyone wanna have a formal vote, or is that sufficient? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
And then the next one would be to add this final clause with preference to given to areas near high capacity transit.
Carolyn?
Okay, if, if we're voting on that one now, I would like to say something about that particular phrase, um. In order to give preference to multifamily hu- or multi- middle housing. Um. I, I. When you're in, in an existing zone, you know, if we say try to get. Developers. In say, you know, closer to transit in the residential zone to build middle housing somehow. But if they were two miles away, we didn't, but the thing is, they're still in the exact same zone. I, I don't really see how we can. Put additional pressure on a property owner who happens to be a little closer to the transit, and they're all in the same zone. Yeah, I just, I just don't see that being feasible at all, so anyway, that's my reason for not voting for it.
Adam, did you have your hand up?
Isn't that allowing of quadplexes already, putting. Increased pressure on property owners near high capacity transit, because if you're far enough away, it only. Um, it only gives, allows for a duplex.
But that's the law, that's the law, this is policy, so that's the law, it's required, but. You know, once you're beyond that quarter mile, you know. I think we're messing around with some pretty vague. Um, I don't see how we can even do it at all, I don't see how you can write a regulation. Within the residential area without. Changing the zoning, so.
Yeah, Ca- I, I think Carolyn is getting at a, a interesting point, and the point is. What's the meaning of preference given? Um, I don't know what that means, um, and so if this is a policy, how does that. Policy get implemented, um, so that would be my, one of my concerns about that language. Adam?
I- in the interest of time, I'm happy to withdraw, uh, this twenty-eight and thirty-two comments.
Okay.
Okay.
So done.
Okay, let me just, my notes here, I'll strike that. Um, okay, so that concludes the substantive amendments. Um, and then returning to, um, the comment log. Um, there were some minor comments, um. There were several of them.
Before you go on, can I just clarify, the, the final thing we ended up with doesn't have that mandated by state law party either, right? I was just confused by the text, cause I don't think the work group language initially included that language.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure that's not in there, okay.
Okay, actually, before we move on, uh, Adam, uh, we've been going on for over two hours. So let's take a ten minute break and resume at, um. Eight twenty.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Kate's back online, we can forge ahead, Adam.
Sounds good. And Victor.
Oh, yeah, Victor's off, yeah.
Alright, looks like everybody's here. Um, so the last piece of um, the last piece that we had to look at were the minor comments. Um, so these, if you're looking at the planning commission bill twenty four oh six, uh page four. The minor comments are listed there. These are primarily things that didn't necessarily change the direction of policies, but just propose some some minor amendments. Um, some housekeeping edits. Um, we can agree to those by by consensus unless we unless. Uh, planning commissioner wants to discuss uh one of those or any of those uh minor comments listed there.
Uh, Chris. Nope, you're muted.
I have a couple. I thought twenty three and thirty one were actually pretty substantive. And that they limit the uh provision to what's required by law as opposed to. You know, having it be something that's in our discretion, but sort of puts us in a situation where we're trying to do the minimum amount possible. And I had a little bit of a um, I think a friendly amendment for thirty four that instead of saying single family, we'd say residential, so. Those are the three that I'd be interested in talking about twenty three, thirty one and thirty four.
Okay, um, let me get. Let me get that pulled up here. Like I said, I've got one too many documents open here, so it'll take just a second. Um, we'll start with twenty three, so that was a proposed change to policy two point four. Um, and let me pull that up here. Um, and so the proposed change here would add where mandated by state law at the end of two point four. Here, I'll highlight it. Uh, this was proposed by Commissioner Radhaven, um. I don't know if Commissioner Gels or Vice Chair Ragam who would like to start here, but.
I I guess a clarification is, does a, does duplex, which would be everywhere, does that count as? Um, moderate density? Are we only talking about the fourplexes?
Uh, moderate density would be anything, uh, here, we're using that as a standard for duplex, triplex, quadplex.
Okay, so by law, then it's, it is everywhere.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm I'm happy to withdraw that comment then.
Okay. Strike that, okay, and then I'm sorry, Commissioner Gels, what was the the next one that you wanted to talk about?
He's muted.
Yeah.
Thought it was thirty four.
Alright, it was thirty one.
Okay, so that is in polit. Switch documents here real quick. And thirty one was a proposed change to um. Oh, let me see.
That's here, land use all been sixteen one insert before on where mandated by law.
Yeah, maybe I.
Just don't see it incorporated in here.
Yeah, I maybe I don't. I was working pretty quick to get this together for you guys, um, so. Uh, yeah, Chair Rag or Vice Chair Rag, I know this was from your comment, so maybe I got it in the wrong spot.
Yeah, that that insert before on was for sixteen five, which I believe we've already. Discussed and talked about as a as a commission.
Okay, then that's fine. And that's where we didn't, we didn't include it there, I think, okay. And then the last one, I, the last one I raised was thirty four.
Okay, so that's on seventeen three here.
Right. And I I'm okay with the change, but it says especially single family zones, and I thought we might want to say residential zones instead there, but. You know, I'm I'm still a little confused by the whole thing.
That's here in this last sentence.
Right, that was more of a friendly suggestion, I mean.
So then instead of, so your proposal is this here, we. Adding residential here.
Right, just as we sort of move away from, you know, we use the broader term. Because I think the section, what's seventeen, I think maybe about maybe title residential.
Oh, yeah, seventeen is uh here. The allowed uses in commercial and mixed use zones balance the city's economic development and housing needs. And then. And this is one of the. So residential, if we generalize it to residential, that shouldn't necessarily be a problem, um, that's. Part of the council's direction here, dealing with commercial office zone is that um to include some. Um, buffering from the neighboring residential zones or single family zones, so either way, um. Kind of the same.
Adam, uh, that was directed at your comment, do you have any problem with that?
No, no problems there.
Okay, uh, Angie.
I'm gonna withdraw my hand.
Kate, you had your hand up, should we? Did you withdraw it?
I, yeah, I, well, I just want to make. Change to the multi-family language, because I know that was really important, um. To the commercial office zone, it doesn't change that multifamily is a being added to commercial, it looks like, it's just. Wordsmithing, I.
Yes, it's. It's saying we're, we're gonna minimize those percent potential impacts.
So all we've added here is especially residential zones, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's all that surrounds the CO anyway, right?
Correct. So is there, is there consensus on this um? Uh, the change as presented here? Alright, I have five or six thumbs up and one thumbs down on the consensus there.
Are you okay without a formal vote, Angie?
Yes.
Okay, any.
Uh, Adam, is that an old hand?
Uh, no, that's a new hand.
Okay, I think yours was up before Carolyn's.
Um, anticipating the next question, I would like to revisit or look at um log item number two. Revisions to five, two and five, three.
Okay. So these are changes here. Five, two and five, three. And the um, the proposed amendment is to change the word allow to encourage. In both policies. Um, Vice Chair Rag, do you wanna?
Yeah, I I mean, I I believe we ought to stick with allow that that meets the law, that's what the housing work group said encourages a. Policy deviation, um, so I I believe that's not a minor change, so I'll advocate for. Rejecting uh log item number tubes changes.
Uh, Carolyn.
Well, I appreciate the spirit of the amendment, um, I think, you know, uh. Trying to how somehow put some regulations together that encourage the duplexes, the triplex, the townhomes. Um, is kind of difficult for the city to accomplish and. I think the point is that. These regulations are allowing something in a new place. If somebody wants to build it, they can, so. I guess I I think allow is a better language to work with on these things.
Victor.
Agree with the previous two comments. I don't think there's a huge compelling reason to make the change.
Any further comments? So do we have a consensus to? Delete or to retain the original language of allow and delete the. Insert of encourage on those two items. Okay. Five, one, one. Anyone feel like we need a formal vote?
I do not.
Okay.
You're saying we're. It it is very confusing to understand what's actually being voted on here. We're changing this to encourage?
No, we were not, we were keeping.
Okay, I think there's a double negative or something that had me confused. I'm not an abstention, I am an allow.
Okay, so it's six, one.
Great.
Okay. Any other specific uh minor items that are worthy of discussion?
Okay. So with that, um. What we'll do at this point. We're we're working towards getting, or we want to get this, these documents to a public review draft uh phase. So that they can go to the, the public can consider the proposal. At the community workshop that we're planning for in May, um. And so unless there are other, um, unless the planning commission needs to have another look at this, we can move this, this draft. Forward to that public review um stage. Um, without coming back, we don't necessarily need to come back unless um there's desire for more discussion at this point.
Victor.
Does that mean that the April tenth meeting would be potentially canceled? Is that right? Am I understanding that properly?
Uh, there would probably, we still have some other items that would be on the agenda, um, but. This would not come back on the April tenth meeting. The next touch on this, the planning commission would have on the housing element stuff. Uh, both the housing element and the land use consistency amendments, that would be in May when we come back from the. Community workshop, but April tenth would still probably be scheduled. So it sounds like I I'm not seeing anybody clamoring for more discussion on April tenth, um.
Need a motion, Adam?
Uh, we don't need a motion, but if you wanted to make one, it'd be great, um, but we're, we're gonna move, so we can just move forward with this as the public review draft. Um, I'll get it cleaned up and, and ready for public consumption and then, um, and then, like I said, after that community workshop, we can come back to the, um, we'll come back to the overall comp plan update um, and respond to those comments we might get, so we still, we still have a little bit more process, but for the next meeting, we get a pass on housing, you know.
So will you show, will you circulate the draft before you send it out to the public so we can just make sure all the changes have been incorporated?
Yeah, I can, I can share that with the group, um, offline, just to make sure that everything's in there.
Yeah, that'd be a good, good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much, and that was a, uh, a quick turnaround on all the comments, uh, I thought the the questions were all answered quite well, and you did a great job, and we appreciate your efforts, I assume there were a few long nights in there.
Just a few, yeah. All right, thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, other business. Allison, do you have a report?
Yeah, just a brief one, um, so kind of following up on what Victor was just asking about for April tenth, um, what we're planning for April tenth and seventeenth, the next two meetings is to bring back some of the remaining pieces of a land use element that need further review. Um, namely, that's the climate action stuff that we talked about a couple meetings back, as well as there's some parks and open space policies in there that we're going to be pulling into um, a new parks element along with a reference to the Prose Plan, it's a lot of Ps. Um, so we'll be putting together some initial drafts to give you that first briefing on those on the tenth and then give you a chance to make comments and come back on the seventeenth for any amendments and changes to that. Um, I also wanted to update you, I can't remember how much I said about this last week, um, the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Open Space Trust have been hard at work on the park zone discussion, they've actually bifurcated that into two separate things, they're now talking about doing an open space zone, which would cover the open space properties, the ones that are exclusively open space, and then later they will come back to do a park zone that would cover the more active use parks as well as the ones that are a combination of active use and open space, um, so they're trying to take what's hopefully the easier piece first with open space, um, there seems to be a little more consensus about what kind of regulations are appropriate for that, um, and they're hoping to kind of home in on their draft by, well, before May eighth, and they would be bringing that recommendation to the Planning Commission on May eighth um, for incorporation into the comprehensive plan update. And then that other piece, the park zone that covers the active parks, would be dealt with later, I think the commis, the PRC would continue to work on that through this year. Their recommendation might not be ready until the end of the year or next year, depending on how long that takes. So that would have to be dealt with on a separate track from the comp plan, so that'd probably be wrapped in to work in twenty-twenty-five, it, it may or may not need an additional comprehensive plan amendment, so if it does, that would be included in the twenty-twenty-five annual update to the comp plan. Um, so I mean, I think there's, this is still a little fluid, things could change, but that's the direction that things are going with the PRC right now, and I just wanted to give you an update, um, so you know what to expect in terms of what's coming back. Um, the final thing on that is they did determine that a land use map amendment will be needed. Um, there's currently land use designations for open space and parks, which we want to maintain, but they've shuffled around some of the, a few properties that need to flip-flop from one or the other. So I'm meeting with folks from the Parks Team and our GIS Team tomorrow, actually, to start going through the mapping and getting that all nailed down, um. I'm not sure yet if we'll bring that land use map amendment in April along with the other land use element issues that we need to deal with, or if we'll just hold that for when things come back from the PR, PRC in May, but either way, um, that, that little piece with the land use map will be coming as well. So that's kind of what's on the horizon, um, like Adam mentioned, we're also working hard to plan the May first, um, open house, we have a consultant on board to help us prepare materials and boards that summarize each element and have some interactive components for the community members attending. Um, we're also gonna have an online survey launch in parallel with that event, so people can either complete the survey while they're there, or if they're unable to attend, they could do the survey as a standalone thing, um. Yeah, so there's a lot in the works right now, it's very busy, but that's kind of the brief summary of what's coming up in the next couple months. Any questions?
Uh, Chris.
Yeah, so should we be looking for meetings on the tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth?
Uh, at this point, we're not planning on having a meeting on the twenty-fourth, we're planning to cancel that one, um, to give staff some time to prepare for the May first event.
So I can take that off the calendar.
Uh, Angie.
Allison, um, just for clarification, the land use map changes when you talked about the parks and the open space swap, if you will. Um, is that just kind of a clerical update, or are you actually potentially reassigning properties to different?
It would reassign a handful of properties, like, for example, I don't know which actual park names will be moving, but there's some that are currently designated as park that will need to move to open space, and there's some that are currently designated as open space that will need to move to park. And what they're trying to do there is only include the ones that are exclusively open space in that open space designation and zone. And then anything that's mixed or has active uses will be in the park zone.
So it sounds, sounds like the thought of there being a highly compressed schedule to deal with the park stuff is a thing of the past.
Yeah, I think the PRC pretty quickly realized that they were going to need more time to figure out what kind of development regulations would be appropriate for the more active parks, and that there's a pretty big range in terms of what's going on in those parks, and it wasn't gonna be easy to draft something, and they, they asked for more time on that, and so that's how the strategy of kind of separating the two out came about.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. The next meeting will be a special meeting and is scheduled for Wednesday, April ten at six PM. There being no other business to come before the Planning Commission, time is now eight forty-four PM and the meeting is adjourned.
Don't we, don't we have a, don't we have some amendments that are being
Chairman, and we have planned absences we need to discuss?
Uh, oh, that's right, we do, I'm sorry, I missed that. Uh, let's do planned absences and then let's deal, I believe, um, Carolyn has something to propose.
Uh, I will be absent on April tenth.
Anyone else?
Let's think of, I told you guys before, I'm, I'm gonna be gone from the twenty-eighth of April through the twenty-third of May, I had no idea how many things I was gonna miss.
Okay.
I am out of town on April tenth. If you are lacking a quorum, I could be made available, but I am on vacation with my family.
Sounds like we'll have one. Okay, Carolyn, I saw
Spring break, isn't that week's spring break?
It is, yeah.
So I'm just gonna be absent, thanks.
Okay. Uh, Carolyn, I saw late today that there was an email from you, I was not able to look at it thoroughly, uh, but, um, yes, I understand you have something to discuss.
Yes, I have a couple of motions, uh, that I'd like to make. Um, this is in regard to the council's recent vote to request a proposal from the city manager for reconstituting the Planning Commission to four hired and paid commissioners who would not necessarily be Mercer Island citizens, and three volunteer planning commissioners. Um, and so this is something that's being, um, worked on now and will be considered by the council going forward, possibly as soon as April second. Um, so I listened to the council's presentation or, or discussion of this matter, and there were two reasons provided by the council as to why this was proposed, one was the ability of the Planning Commission to process the work before them, uh, fast enough. Okay, and the other one was, uh, a question as to the quality of our work. So, um, the, the, this proposal is being considered in, on the basis of this commission right now occupied by us commissioners, and so I think that it would be a good idea. We have not been asked about any of these things that I'm aware of, you know, or there's, I don't believe there's been discussion in regards to how could things be faster, or, or, or how could things be of a higher quality and, and what quality is it that's being determined, what does that term mean, so, um, I am, wanna make a couple motions to try to um, investigate our speed and whether we can do things faster, and exactly what is meant by a question of as to the quality of our work. So I will make the first motion. Um, I move that the commission form a subcommittee to examine commission processes for the purpose of making recommendations to the commission and staff ways to process our work more efficiently. The subcommittee would provide recommendations to the commission at our special hybrid meeting on April tenth, twenty-twenty-four, when the topic would be placed on our agenda. Following review of the topic, the commission would make recommendations, if any, to staff to improve commission productivity. So that's the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Shall I speak to the motion any further, or, um, well
If you have more to, more to say, go ahead, Carolyn.
Okay, so just, I've explained the context for making the motion, and the specific language of it is just to, um, get a smaller group to discuss um, our processes, and kind of independent from the staff, just kind of amongst ourselves as to what is there anything we could do to be faster, we have a huge workload, this is not our fault. And, you know, and, but is there anything we can do, we've never been asked? You know, and I don't believe we've ever had a serious discussion about it. So let's, let's brainstorm and, um, do this rather promptly and, um, see if there's anything we wanna offer, so, um, that's the reason for the motion.
Uh, Chris.
Yeah, I, I like the idea, you know, of, you know, having a examination of how we do things and try to do things better, I guess it, for me, it's the cart before the horse a little bit, I think I'd wanna find out what the council's up to and whether or not, uh, I mean, if they're gonna, to, to re-change this anyway, I'm not sure I wanna put a lot of time into a new process for a commission that doesn't exist anymore. So, you know, I, I think, uh, I'm sort of more inclined along the lines of your second motion, Carolyn, that, uh, tries to figure out, uh, you know, are there things we can do to, 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 if there are some dissatisfaction on the council side that address their concerns, um.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Kate.
Yeah, I've been thinking about this, uh, a lot, and, um, I, I appreciate the idea for sure, I agree with Commissioner Gels that um, it's preemptive and it could really, in my opinion, uh, based on regular work with elected officials, it could really backfire. Um, uh, from a political standpoint, um, you know, uh, trying to get out ahead of their process could, um, could be considered, uh, I don't know if, uh, what's the word? Ordinate something? What's the word when you
Impolitic?
Well, in politics, in politic, but also, um, subversive, or I don't know, something along those lines, there's a word that I can't find.
Insubordinate.
Insubordinate, exactly, I think it could be considered insubordinate, considering we are, um, voted in by the council, you know, getting ahead of them, and I, in my opinion, um, you know, it, it might be better to just reach out to electeds, uh, informally, and, and, I don't know, that's just my opinion, and, um, the other thing I wanna say is that I do think I do think we have been given some guidance, um, so I don't think that's totally fair, um, we got a big training on Robert's rules and we are not following it. And, and one of the things that we are definitely not following is, um, and Deb took a lot of time to explain some of these things to us, and other trainers took a lot of time to explain these things to us, that this is not supposed to be a discussion forum per se in the way that we are running it. And we have some flexibility, um, but if we, if we were following Robert's rules, there'd be a lot less, um, crosstalk. You'd state your opinion, and if someone else stated a different opinion, you wouldn't revisit and reiterate your opinion, I think we do a lot of, um, repetition of our statements, um, after someone said something different. So, um, I think just generally, and, and I am one hundred percent including myself as part of the problem there. Um, but, but I think we were given a training at expense to the city and we're not following it, so I think to be fair, um, we've gotta acknowledge that, so I, I'm in, in favor of seeing what the, um, council members come up with, and that's my opinion.
Yeah, Carolyn, one thought I had, um, in listening to your motion is that if the council was interested in us giving them suggestions on how we could improve, they would have asked us. And as far as I know, they didn't, um, so I think I agree with Kate that, that a better approach would be if you're curious, um, to reach out in, informally, um, and inquire what the background is for this and maybe what the facts are, I myself have a lot of questions about how the the new or a reconstituted planning commission would operate given the, the general outline that was given. Um, and I think it's be very difficult to implement that vision, um, but, um, but it may be that the council is, um, you, you know, if they're interested in a more professional analytical look at planning issues, um, the approach is, has some merit, frankly. Um, if they're looking for citizen input, um, you know, they're um, they're cutting that back substantially, um, but that's, that could be a model that, that might serve them. Um, it would sort of duplicate staff effort to a degree, um, but they'll have to sort through that if they decide to do that. So I would, I would not be in favor of your first motion. Any other comments, Carolyn?
Um, no, I, I appreciate the feedback that, that everyone provides, um, I don't know when or if the council will make a decision on this and whether anything that we would, um, you know, figure out amongst ourselves to express, uh, would occur before or after, but I, I take all of your, your input and I think it's a good discussion, I appreciate it.
Do we vote on the motion, or do you wanna withdraw?
I'd take a vote, sure.
Deb?
Uh, Commissioner Gels?
Oh, nay.
Commissioner Qs? Commissioner Ques. Commissioner, uh, Rashis. Vice Chair Rigam. Commissioner Batazzo. Uh, Commissioner Bozeman?
Yes.
And Chair Murphy.
Okay, the motion fails. Five, one, one. You have a second one, Carolyn?
I do have a second motion.
Okay.
I move that the commission direct the chair to request dialogue with the council. For the purpose of ascertaining what the council considers good or poor quality products in the course of performing our assigned tasks. The chair would report the discussion, providing it has occurred to the commission at our special hybrid meeting on April tenth, twenty twenty-four. When the topic would be on our agenda for information purposes.
Second. Discussion.
I propose this because it has been. Asserted by. Council members that. The products that we come up with are, are not of the quality that they. Would like, but I don't believe we've ever heard. From the council as to what considers good quality work. Are they looking for us to simply. Try to ascertain what they want and give them something they would agree with? Would that be good quality? Or what, what is? What is the complaint about our work? And this is something that. I think is. Something that regardless of their decision. Would be a very worthwhile discussion for us to have and, you know. And I don't mean to put you on the spot in particular, Chair, you just happen to be the Chair, but I, I think it's a discussion that. If the council is not reaching out to us, but is yet declaring in a public meeting that. Our work is of not the quality that they want, and they did not call it, you know, that it was not good. Um, boy, wow, I'd really like to know what that's about. Cause like all of you, I have dedicated incredible. Numbers of hours to this, and I don't even know what that complaint is about. I'd sure like to know. So anyway, that's the reason for proposing this. I think it would be a positive discussion for us, for the community. And I think it would. Be helpful to the council, too. It's a big thing that they're proposing, a very big thing.
Uh, Chris.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to get some input from the council. I guess the question is how best to do it. And I guess, Mike, if you felt like. Be helpful for you to have a mandate from us to go forward and chat with them, then I might be inclined to go with the motion on the other hand. You know, the alternative to reach out to people informally, I just actually sent a note to a couple of councilmen, said what the hell's going on. Um, you know, it's another way to do it, but I think it's something to try to, to figure out. And I guess I'd be interested to hear from. You, Chair, if you, you know, would relish the opportunity to go forward with. Chat with them with our backing, or just as least have, you know, other means for us to try to gather intelligence.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm in support of this motion. I think. Yeah, it, it would be good to know what, where that, why, why it's being labeled as bad. And I think it would help us as a commission to give a, deliver a better work product if no change is made. It would help the commission, or sorry, the, the city council, if a change is made to. Well, that, you know, justify that change, as you mentioned, as I think it was Chair Murphy who mentioned, that's removing. Uh, you know, a public input majority from the planning commission, which is a big change, so. You know, at, at least they could document the reason why that was done. So I think, yeah, I think it's a win-win. And I think, yeah, it's, I think it's preferable to. Having both meet together because that's a huge cost of everyone's time. And I think it's a little more. I think because they've, you know, there is that formal. Direction to investigate it. I think there's ought to be some formal documentation on how we can improve. Even if the structure does not change. So I'll, I'll vote for this one.
Okay, any other? Comments? Carolyn, is that an old hand?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just. I, I, I feel like that process is gonna happen anyway, and, and I really appreciate the spirit of this. But my preference, just based on my experience dealing with elected officials. I think this too could backfire, but that's just my experience and my perspective. I do really appreciate the spirit of this one. And I, I kinda wanna vote for it, but I think I'm gonna have to say no because I think the risk of doing it that way as opposed to. Less formally, I think it could be pretty high. People run for office and. There's some personnel. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I think what you're getting at, Kate, is that it, with a, a. Mandate, as it were, to speak to them, it looks more like a power struggle than an inquiry. Angie.
Yeah, I think I would. Well, you know, I wanna acknowledge, I, I think bringing it up, especially in a public forum where this is being recorded. And everyone can go back and watch. I mean, I think it takes a lot of courage to a- ask for the feedback and. Try and formalize the request. I've appreciated everybody's comments here, cause I could sit down in any number of chairs. And one of the things I'm really learning in life, I, being a forty-seven-year-old person who just keeps learning new lessons. Some of these situations tend, like I've gotten better information. Uh, when I start one-on-one and I start more informally, people are a little more willing to tell me. Probably what they don't wanna say in public, if there's some important things that they need to tell me, which I've appreciated. I've also stuck my foot in my mouth by saying some things publicly. I wish I hadn't. So I would love to give. Our elected officials who are leading us an opportunity to. Talk to us maybe a little bit less formally if that is of interest. You know, I also appreciate there's probably some other things going on that. Aren't necessarily captured in this discussion. So I think all of it is important, but I'm. Not inclined to like formally kind of put a stake in the ground about it. I'm more inclined to make a few phone calls and say, hey, what's up?
I hear you. Victor.
Uh, so. You know, I really have two minds here. One is feedback is always good. And regardless, regardless of the change. The wheels grind slowly, and so it would always be good to hear how we can improve. With that said, I think Commissioner Batazzo and Commissioner Ques said, both said something very important, which is the word formal. There is nothing, Chair Murphy, that has prevented you from going and talking to the council and getting feedback informally. There's nothing that has prevented any of these commissioners on this council from getting feedback informally as well. And I think a formal request. Has, has a different, has a different vibe. So I am not supportive of this.
Any further comments? Okay, Deb, let's take a vote.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Bozeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rashis?
Name.
Commissioner Gels?
Name.
Chair Murphy?
Name.
Commissioner Batazzo?
Nay.
Vice Chair Rigam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ques.
Nay.
A motion fails five to two. Uh, but that will not necessarily defer, de- detract me from. Talking to appropriate people.
Thank you so much, everyone, for your discussion about this. Appreciate it very much, and thank you, Mike.
Okay. Okay, any further business? Okay, the next meeting is April ten at six. There being no further business to come before the Planning Commission. The time is now. Nine oh six P M and the meeting is adjourned. Please stay in, on screen until the staff has terminated the broadcast. Good evening and thank you all for attending and participating.